Hello, everybody. If you are interested in some paperwork about the meeting, it's on the table that corner by the fire extinguisher. Everything's back there they need, right, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
And we'll officially call the meeting to order and welcome everybody. And just take a moment of bowing our heads and praying and reflect on how wonderful Holden Beach is and how lucky we are to be here, just for a moment. Thank you very much. Let's pledge allegiance to the flag to my right, please.
(Coughing) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number four, consideration of approving the agenda. Is there anyone having corrections, modifications, or otherwise is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to approve if the agenda is written.
Is there a second discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimously approved, Madam Clerk. Number five, consideration of approval of the minutes for October 17th. Is there a motion? Who's attacking?
I'll second it.
All right. Any discussion, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foe say no. The meeting minutes of October 17th are unanimously approved. Number six, public comments on agenda items. I have a list here. Marty Arrowood, if you would, all of you, please, whenever your turn comes, come to the podium to my right, speak into the microphone, give us your name and your address.
Marty Arrowood, 114 Front Street. I have two items.
Is that microphone working?
Turn off again.
About that.
Can you peep in the back here?
I can do a teacher voice. Okay. Number one, I want to address the audit to Mr. McCraney and the town employees. Job well done. After attending the Audit Committee meeting and listening to the LGC report, the LGC, who is mandated by the state legislature of North Carolina to oversee the physical stability of towns and municipalities, says that our town finances show no concerns and abnormalities. I think those findings should quell any concerns and misinformation that's been floating around. Thank you, Mr. McCraney and the town. Block Q, I support accepting the bid to begin Phase One of the plans for Block Q that had been in development since the property was purchased almost three years ago. This was not, I don't know if you guys realize it, but in 1991 or '02, the owner of Block Q, not Mr. Griffin, offered the Block Q property at the tax valuation rate to the town. We went through this at that time. They wanted to, group wanted to purchase the property and put it into green space. And it was discussed at the time, oh, there's plenty of green space around, we don't need to have Block Q. And so, we turned it down. The last three years, we've been working on it. Our town needs the green space. The voters need a place to park that's organized. We've learned with the paid parking that it can be managed. And if it's managed, it's very positive for the town. It will be paid for in the next quarter. And if it is sold in the future, we all know it's going to a developer. And if they develop that property, my first comment or my first thought, if that area is developed, where's the festival by the sea going?
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Bauer?
Jim Bauer, 329 Ocean Boulevard West. On the 18th of this month, the Holden Beach Property Owners Association had 34 people at the meeting, including you, Mr. Mayor. I had a petition up for signature that you have in front of you now. Seventeen out of the 34 people signed that petition, which means that at least 50 percent of the town thinks that maybe we should do a little bit more research or put the brakes on the Block Q property before we start paving over land that doesn't need to be paved over. Paving is expensive and it's permanent. Removing paving is abhorrently expensive, if anybody's ever done that. Getting rid of paving is unbelievably expensive. The retention ponds that we're going to have to need because of the paving are going to be dangerous, both as a mosquito collection point and as some of the retention ponds that are almost nine feet deep are also a drowning hazard, where there would have to be some sort of fencing put over. We're also losing valuable real estate due to the placement of the retention ponds that are necessitated by the paving, which isn't required. The mayor has told us that paving is a requirement. I would like to know where the statutes would say that the paving is a requirement, and if that's true, why virtually none of the public or private spaces on this island is paved. I'd also like to ask the attorney for the town, have you addressed any legalities regarding all of this? Where are the public hearings, the notice and the comment that are supposed to be required for this? Nobody's heard about paving, even though this has been going on for two years. Paving is a brand new thing for all of us. Maybe you've spoken about it, but not us. What happened to the, and the two other things that are left? Number one, this paving, this paving thing ridiculously lowers the amount of parking spaces for boats on the island. It doesn't increase it, it lowers it. So, if you are a voter here and you're concerned about leaving your boat, your trailer somewhere, there's going to be fewer spaces if this goes through. Everlasting is, what happened to, just two months ago, it was a dire emergency about the lift station. That was a $5 million question you guys were asking yourself, and now it's not even important. We have to get our priorities correct. And Block Q, Block Q needs to be developed, absolutely, absolutely needs to be developed. But we need to slow down and not stop paving over things that don't need to be paved over. Thank you.
Mr. Parfus?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Good evening. My name is Rick Parfus, 140 Tarpin Drive, Holden Beach. The subject is paving of Block Q. It's unfortunate we didn't have the actual site plan from the bid drawings available close to seeing the package that actually shows you what all the work is, including these drainage ponds, so someone could get a handle on what this work actually will accomplish. I'm again requesting that action on Item 11 be deferred until the incoming commissioners and the architects, the two incoming commissioners, can sit down and go over the project. I did get a copy of the project drawings on Friday, and when reviewing them, identified some issues that I'd like to discuss with the architect and the other commissioners, such as the choice of impervious materials for a majority of the park. And the problem is, is because of that, we have to donate a fair amount of that valuable real estate to the stormwater filtration system. Currently, we're paving with this contract about 50 percent of the site, which is more than homeowners are subjected to. But I do understand the town doesn't have to follow that rule. I also think that the net reduction in trailer parking should be discussed. I'd like to see the perpendicular parking spaces put back to parallel, as it is now, with car or boats there. If we want to dress it up with, you know, rocks and stuff as opposed to asphalt, I think that could be a good thing to consider, to reduce the area taken up by the drainage facilities. Additionally, after reviewing the pavilion engineering report that suggests that perhaps the pavilion needs to be torn down, I think it's worth considering if that pavilion could move to this area, in the Block Q area, and see if it will have an effect on the current paving contract. Please allow the time for this review. I think that we could avoid change orders or pair outs of completed work or cancellations or all that kind of stuff. I think the review could be accomplished between now and the next meeting. The new commissioners aren't seated, so we could all meet without having to meet open meeting law requirements, I think. And it gives us time to understand the decision-making that God has given us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Myers?
Hi, I'm Tom Myers, 301 Ocean Boulevard West. I also am asking you to please defer the decision on Block Q until after a public information session can be conducted. I know you've been working on this for two years, I know you've conducted several public meetings, and I am convinced the general public still does not really know about what you're going to do tonight, and some very important information has not been shared. The public has not been informed that the boat trailer parking is going to be reduced by more than half, and the 75 new car parking spots are going to be added around the perimeter where boats used to be parked. The public has not been informed that over 50 percent of the property is going to be paved with asphalt, because that's a significant percentage higher than what we can do on our lots, even with the new increase from 30 to 40 percent. The public is not aware that it's almost an acre of asphalt that's going to be laid, and then as a result of that, significant amount of the remaining property is going to have to use the runoff, water runoff retention filtration basins. The public has not been informed, as promised, that engineering report in February stating the pavilion requires significant repairs, and since repairs probably exceed the value of the structure, should consider the opportunity for replacement. Which means we have an opportunity to move it away from that sewer system, the stinky wet well that it sits right next to right now. I can visualize it sitting on an attractive grassy open space in Block Q. Unfortunately, the relocation of the pavilion or any adjustments to better accommodate the festival on Block Q that's not in the plan, and it's not clear if there will be enough remaining green space to allow that to happen, given all the retention basins. So, if not, we'll be forced to rebuild the pavilion right back next to the sewer station, continue conducting our concerts there, instead of in a grassy spot where people can lay their lawn chairs out and enjoy the concerts. So, these are the reasons why I think tonight's decision should be deferred until after an information session can be conducted. The bids are good for at least 90 days or 20 sufficient times rescheduled. The public deserves to be informed about this important decision, and they need the ability to provide input into how this valuable town asset will be used. Also, this renovation effort will be, has been opened, and we'll know if we need additional funds to accommodate the work on the pier, in which case we might have an option to redirect Block Q funds to focus more on the pier, since Block Q really isn't that urgent. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, sir. Captain Fairclough?
Hey, guys, I'm Captain Cage Fairclough. I'm in Hollyrood Fish and Charters, in Hollyrood, New York. I've been with this area for a couple hundred years, and we call me the attorney. I'd like to thank the current board and the mayor, for all the hard-working guys that put into it. I know it's not easy to serve in public office. And then also, we have some new commissioners coming on, and it's going to be a challenge. It's not easy. I'm a founding member of the Lockwood Hill Association, and also the NC for Higher Cities Association. We've learned a lot, round to myself, about politics and towns and municipalities and counties, and on a federal level over the last several years. It's been a great process for us, and I really got to say that here in Holden Beach, we're all very extremely fortunate, we've been very lucky. When I'm in towns like Rhode Island, and they have homes falling into the water, or we're in the Outer Banks and Long Cheese, and they're struggling with their inlet or popsul, or I meet with people from the Property Owners Association at Oak Island on the west side, and they have sandbags in front of their homes, and there's no beachfront out there. We're crushing it here in Holden Beach. We're doing a really, really good job, and I'm super proud of all this place. I think sometimes we don't understand how fortunate we are, but from a person who gets to talk to other people in other beach towns and other builders, we're in a really, really good spot. I think buying Block Q was a great idea. We have limited water access. Our resource here, as far as accessing it for voters, is very limited, and we don't have a big spot here at this time. But purchasing Block Q and having places that we do, and whether or not you guys move forward with the project that's on hand, or there's a new project, I think the main thing that we need to all understand is that we preserve that, and we preserve water access for current residents, and then also for the future. That is a bright spot for everybody that lives here. It's a big part of our DNA, it's a big part of why we come here. As a realtor, I can say for the crews that we sell and list on the island, or when I'm meeting with buyers, they want to know, where's the closest playground? Is it easy to access? So, that helps your property values, you know? And in the end, I mean, we all want our real estate being one of our greatest assets. So, we wanted to appreciate, when we go to sell, and we all like to make a nice profit, you guys have got a lot of work cut out for you managing that. And, you know, I feel good that we're at a point where we do own Block Q, and I feel good that we're at a point that it'll be a decision made today on the top of what's going on with the plans or if their future plan is done. But I guess the main point that I need to drive home to you guys, that's a resource that we need to preserve, or need to make sure that we keep it for the future of our whole area. This past year, we were at a great threshold of Lockwood Hill, due to David and Everett Sealeb and the town of Holden Beach and this current board. And it was, we were in a really big pickle where the core engineers didn't want to touch it, you know? They put us in that pickle. We had a million dollars in the bank, and they basically wouldn't let us spend it.
Best time.
But anyways, thank you for your time tonight. You guys had a great Thanksgiving. Appreciate everybody that came out tonight, and keep up the good work. You guys are precious.
Thank you. Captain Williams?
I've been tar fishing for plus 20 years, and fishing and construction all my whole life. My grandfather built a house up here on the island in '68 or '69, somewhere in there. He grew up growing every summer, just remember, you know, the drastic difference in where it is now. Fast places with just open bins, and I mean, it's just completely different. And with everything that's grown and changed that comes along, you've got to adjust that the infrastructure has to follow. So, I just want to keep the facts, and I'll say this, I probably use that program with an Indian village. I say that from. And my livelihood, my business, but I think that you put in perspective of what's going on around us to show how important it is. I've made a lot of phone calls and spent a lot of time with wildlife, trying to help the boat ramp situation and come up with a better solution to where we're at. So, just what's around us, Brunswick County, the fastest-growing county in the state, the fourth or fifth fastest grower in the entire nation. Ocean Isle Beach has 58 spots. Sunset has 26. Sunset Harbor has 31. Southport has 8. Holden Beach has 15 spots. These are half a million to million-dollar boats, I mean, the actual taxable value of what's backing down that ramp would blow your mind. And to totally ignore or worry about it being paved, or however it's got to be done, over the course between that and fishing here, if you look outside, I can tell you, I think the fishing here is a great thing, and I think every time you spot, set aside, as far as a prioritization, I can remember when every street, the side streets were dirt as well, and nobody complained, and they were paid for. If you're going to ride one, you're going to have to pay for it. And I'm not sure the best solution, but whatever the best outcome to help the boat ramp parking, I mean, it's extremely important. When you look at the big picture, what's going on around us, we are ranked probably the worst in the entire state as far as boat ramp. The entire state, and that's coming from wildlife. That's what I think of here. If you don't think that affects your property value, you're wrong. And that boat ramp was put there by the wildlife, not Holden Beach. Not a single cent came from that. Think about the last 30 years of benefit of the town, what it's done. So, all I can say is, however it comes to be, whatever it is, I just want to, you know, somebody put in perspective of how important it is, it's extremely important. And whatever we come to do, follow the real, you know, things on purpose, but if it grows, it's going to have a change, I can tell you. Those boats are going to be ready somewhere. And it's not about holding them out like those longboats.
Best time.
Thanks, sir. Ms. Thomas?
Tracy Thomas, 109 Cricket. I just want to read the letter that I sent to the commissioners, Dear Holden Beach Commissioners, as a newly-elected Holden Beach Commissioner, I am requesting that you do not vote at the November 21st Board meeting to take any action on the paving of Block Q, Item 11 on the agenda. No decision needs to be made on November 21st, unless your sole purpose is to prevent the incoming commissioners from weighing in on the matter. The voters have spoken, and they want change. They want me and my fellow newly-elected commissioners to make a decision on the future of Holden Beach. It would be unprofessional and negligent if you purposely make this decision on November 21st to prevent us from having the opportunity to vote on it. If you move forward with this, we will be forced to reconsider this item in the December Board meeting when we take office, and any termination fees will be on you. Respectfully, Tracy Thomas.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Filmy?
It's Mike Filmy, I live at 137 Carolina Avenue, just down the street, that's a little way. Couple items I want to address. One of them was the end season parking update. Last year, we had an update, the mayor stated that we'd make a decision about taxpayers of being able to park free on the island. The year is here, and we'd like to get that on the agenda sometime in the weekend, to allow the taxpayers to keep parking on the island. Second thing was inspections, I mean inspections I had at the house. Two weeks ago, in a meeting, the contract was here, there was an ordinance created by where people who install pools in their backyards now have to completely encircle them with whatever the state requires, in addition to any fence that might be located on the side of the house. So, if there's a pool behind you, you only have to fence it beside your pool. There are several contracts that are standing right now with people who did not expect to have to put up that fence.
So, we have to talk about things on the agenda?
Yeah, that's, well, that's on the agenda, the inspection department, okay? So, then the next thing I'd like to talk about is Block Q. We've been dealing with this thing for three, we've been dealing with Block Q for three years now. And three years ago, Commissioner Smith stood up, and he wanted Carolina Avenue closed. My point for saying that is not to dump on Commissioner Smith, is there has never been a strategy developed for Block Q, there's never been a strategy which includes the pier and now the land owned by the state. We need to do that before we roll ahead and start messing around with Block Q. The ladies who came up first said, well, we're in Phase One. Well, we're not in Phase One. Phase One was the rest room and the parking spots for which this town supplied for a grant. Phase Two was the parking and the boat parking. Now, we're putting in Phase Two before we're putting in Phase One. That happens when you don't have a strategy, okay? So, it's just kind of frustrating when stuff like that happens. The other issue is the closing of the street. When you put in the new, if you want to put in these new boat ramps, you only get 15 or 17 boats. Right now, you can put 37 boats around that, to include the three-wheelers. On any Saturday or Sunday, and especially during the fishing turn, if you walk around there, like I do, and count, there'll be 37 or 38 boats. Now, if you do what the state or the town wants to do, you're taking the voting away from 15 there, in addition to what's underneath the bridge. There's no reason to close Carolina Avenue now. There's no reason at all. Plus, we use that as egress and ingress, because we do not want to cross Holstead and Brunswick Avenue east, because it's a very dangerous intersection, for which we've asked this town on two occasions, as I've been here 12 years, to put a stop sign, a four-way stop sign in there, and the town is willing to do it. It's a very dangerous intersection. Kids are constantly driving, putting their bikes across the intersection. There's cars coming up over that hill in excess of 25 miles an hour. It's a dangerous intersection, and that's why we drive all the way down Carolina Avenue, up into the hold watch area, and then straight on, and then drive that way. Okay, the final thing is the contract for, I've heard this lobbyist you have, Mike McIntyre. First of all, there's a contract that's out, and it's written, "To dear Dave," when a government writes a contract, the government writes contracts, they're very formal, so it's maybe Mr. Hewitt, but not dear Dave, not the good old boy. And then we write this thing, and this is agenda number, whatever it is, is they want to increase their per diem retainer from $9,225 to $9,725, 9.5 percent increase. That's above the rate of inflation, above the cost of an index, and they want to have out-of-pocket expenses. There's no contract written for what they get for miles, what their per diem rate is, what their meal rates are, all that. They can just go out of heartwash and have out-of-pocket expenses. This is a very poor contract, and I request, recommend that the town reconsider it, if you put it in a formal format, which meets government requirements. Thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Belcher Ragland?
For some reason, I feel like it's the town of Holden Beach versus the Holden Beach Property Owners Association tonight. But anyway, this is the first time I ever spoke at a, I've spoken at a meeting before, and I'm excited to be here tomorrow night. I first want to talk about response to the public comments with the petition that was filed, and the fact that there was a threat that was proposed regarding attempting to overturn the board's decision tonight. So, there's no property owners with homes or businesses that face the section of the street that's proposed to be closed. There's no issue with ingress or egress for any property owner in the vicinity of this section of the street. Closing the street would not impede traffic or access to any other road, property, or public amenity in this area. The public hearing process was conducted pursuant to required state guidelines. Therefore, I'm confident if there were an appeal filed, it would have no merit, and any judge would allow a road closure pursuant to this plan. So, I respectfully request that the order to close Carolina Street be approved by the board tonight. In response to the public comments submitted by Tracy Thomas in regards to the commissioners not currently being in office and what they would purportedly do should the board vote to pave Block Q. In that email, it appears that the newly-elected commissioners feel that their team of three represent a majority for the upcoming Board of Commissioners, which could be collusion. It also appears that their intention is to vote together on issues such as overturning the current board's decision, should they decide to proceed with the Block Q project. This would not only be unethical, it would be an example of a public servant acting with bias and prejudice, which is a direct violation of North Carolina general statutes. I'll also add, should the town incur any costs as a result of any commitments that are made by the current board, and those decisions were reversed, those costs would be at the expense of taxpayers, not at the current commissioners. Elected officials cannot make decisions for their personal benefit. They are making decisions on behalf of an entire town, on behalf of more than just residents of an association. They are making decisions on behalf of people who live here, work here, vote here, own second homes here, rent here. There are far more homeowners that are not represented in the numbers of people who vote, and we have to consider that full. So, I also encourage the board to vote to accept the bid for Wells Brothers Construction and continue the development plans for Block Q, despite any threats that have been received. The project has been under review for a couple of years, and it is time to make a decision to move forward. I actually think it might look kind of cool if it looks like the Oak Island amphitheater area, and think that pavilion can be moved there. And I don't think-
Overall comparable. Permits and fees were seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand, an increase about forty-four percent, mostly due to the parking. Other taxes and licenses were five hundred and twenty-five thousand, which are primarily your local option sales taxes. That was an increase of about forty-six percent due to increase in cost of goods and increases in consumer spending. Your top three expenditures for the general fund were general government at thirty-two percent, public safety at thirty-seven percent, and transportation at seventeen percent. You had other expenditures at fourteen percent. Public safety expenditures were one point three million, a decrease of about three percent, overall pretty comparable. General government expenditure were one point one million, an increase of twenty-nine percent. This is due to an in-house pay study and additional purchase of new software. Transportation was six hundred and twenty-six thousand, an increase of about one hundred and thirty-two percent, and this increase is due to a paving project. Looking at our quick ratio for the water and sewer fund, your quick ratio was three point six seven. The LGC would be concerned if it were less than one. And then your performance indicator for water and sewer, that measures your unrestricted cash over your total expenses, less depreciation and adding in your debt service, was at twenty point forty-seven percent, and the minimum required is sixteen percent. Your operating income performance, you had an operating loss of four hundred and three thousand. Adding back your depreciation and backing out your debt service gives you an operating income performance of negative two hundred and eighty-four thousand. The LGC is concerned with the negative indicator here, and I will discuss that further on the next slide. Some factors due to that caused this decrease were maintenance, an increase in maintenance for materials and parts, and an increase in debt service and two trucks that were purchased. The LGC does require, because this is a negative performance indicator, they do require a letter from the board and the finance department for, to explain what the reason for this indicator was and what your remediation will be going forward. And that is due within sixty days of today's presentation. And this concludes my presentation. Does anyone have any questions?
Commissioners, you got any questions? Mr. Hewitt?
No, sir.
All right, thank you very much.
Good report.
Happy Thanksgiving.
In other words, the town's not going broke, we're okay. Number eight, parking.
Yes, sir. We've got Mr. Varner here from Auto Connect that's going to give us the end of year summary as he did last year this time.
Thank you, Mr. Hewitt. Mayor, Commissioners, Public, I'm Mr. Public. To you all again. We feel, I feel, we are very productive here. Starting off with revenue, on the next chart, twenty-two-three unit, the pound revenue was six seventy-two thousand dollars, good for the asset we were working. We're still seeing a little bit more in November, December, and November, so paid parking is still good, citation of fines will pay through the end of the year. So this is up significantly from the twenty-two-five, to take the pound last year. That is due solely to the, to the base of the parking rates, but the board grew, grew this past year. We did see some significant numbers associated with season permits, but could have been just a year. On a month-to-month basis, April saw a big pick fight when people started buying season permits. They wanted to get a job on it and enjoy the season. Year-to-year, May was down, if you all remember, the weather in May this past year was awful. The morning day weekend was a bust. We just didn't have anybody out here. Turned around in June, and second, and third, and third week of June, and the weekends each was safe, we were just business. So good days there. July is always good, and then you start feeling off towards the end of the year. The number of parked vehicles that we recorded, and this is a combination of people who buy a parking permit and people who they had a season pass that is schemed, or as we play to verify, or the people that don't have a parking permit and need good citations, we helped them all. We had eighty thousand cars parked here in Long Island during course of the year. Next chart is the revenue by month. Same year-to-year comparison, I apologize very greatly for the third. But overall, the last two years combined, we delivered to the town, we worked with them, and they got us the parking permit. Next chart is the permits and violation payments for twenty-two-three's. The left side of this chart highlights the highest of parking permits that we support. The right side kind of summarizes it for you. So day permits and day upgrades, twenty dollars per day for the subject pays for two hours in the morning, and says, hey, you'll pay for the rest of the day, and then you have to pay up to that twenty dollars. That was the number one driver for revenue, for eighteen thousand cars. Season, season upgrades, right behind us though, with over two hundred thousand dollars. From there, you've got, got down to three-hour, four-hour, one-hour rates, et cetera. So it's pretty good value today. Violation payments, same-day violation payments, as you know, they're agreement. We offer a discount for people who pay for their citation on that day that they receive it. It's only twenty-five dollars instead of, and a lot of people do take advantage of that. That is in place specifically to get those settled and cleared up, and that's been very successful. We do have a few that fall into later time periods, or within thirty days, seventy-two thousand nine hundred, late, seventy-five dollar fine after thirty days, if you're too low, so then you just specialist. Parking in front of a fire island is usually good, and those are higher rate drivers. Overall, our violation payment rate is eighty-two percent. I think that is very, very good. We normally see in what parallel, something in the sixty, seventy percent range. Because of the way we structure our same-day payments, we tend to get a higher payment rate of the balance at our last eighteen percent percent, and it's on toilet collections, if not already with, our collection rates. Then, next page is citation report, the types of violations that people end up getting a ticket for. Without a doubt, this is largely due by people that just did not pay for their parking. This is a big difference from last year. Last year, we had a fairly high percentage of what we call no-zone violations. And no-zone is they park outside of a valid parking area. Primarily, that's parking in the right-of-way and side streets. Parking a full-size vehicle in a low-speed vehicle space. This number is, it's fraction of what we saw last year. So that goes to education, working with town staff, public works teams, sign placements up, et cetera, to make sure that the public is aware, if they can't do that, then they're going to get a ticket, get parking right-of-way somewhere, you know, block of driveway, or parking in front of a fire island, or parking in an emergency access. So we've had a much higher success rate of keeping those pravels at bay. One footnote on here, we suspended issuing citations for parking opposing direction of traffic. So if you, on the right-hand side of the road, if you park opposing traffic, that's a violation for the ordinance. In July, we suspended that because of the state statute change that was made in May, that caught up, caught up to May, late June. It says that if, for those types of violations, we can't charge them more than fifty dollars. That is the one issue we had, is if they had paid for their parking, and that is a valid parking spot, they just happen to be in the wrong direction, and can't charge them the twenty dollars of pay for their parking, and also for twenty dollars for parking in the wrong way, I have to pro-rate them. So we stopped that because that was something in our system that we needed to handle. And we will be, we've already adjusted that for the coming year, and we will be reinstating that. And the last page, that's one other change that we need to make, is for whether it's parallel parking, we need to do a little education for the parking public, to make sure that they know that they can't violate driving rules, et cetera, crossing the center line, driving, parking on the other side of the street. They can't do that, and we need to help them. I don't know if they've gotten that part of driver's education, or what is, but we've seen quite a bit of that, and I know our police department has been after us to get that back to the place, so we don't see that problem. That's my summary. Again, we had a, what I consider to be a very good year, we've had a lot of positive feedback. Residents on East End were always coming up to us and thanking us for some of the management and control we had down there. We did have members of the public and the police department, we called us a lot of agents, say, hey, Jim or Jack, who's the local manager, go down to such-and-such a street, there's a car parked in the runway, and he's prepared. So public input, as well as, you know, police department, they turn around and call us and visit. So I'm very pleased with the responsiveness that we've got from the police department. Any questions?
No, DM, I just want to thank you for taking the chaos out of the parking here at Holden Beach. Number one, as well as your employees being able to basically not be the police, but to be able to police the areas for unwanted activities. It was, it seems to be, this past summer seemed to be a whole lot smoother than the first, which I guess that's, we were hoping it was going to be. And maybe we can look at some changes in this after we ingest this information and make some changes for next year. But again, thank you and your professional team for doing the job they did.
I have a question for parking, but it pertains to the Block Q. I don't know if I'm out of line asking, but I don't know if he can stay. Is it okay to ask him?
Sure.
I'd like to, I'd be here.
Okay. So when we had discussed the Block Q parking in the, in the past with you, I just wanted to clarify, we had the fifteen boat diagonal lanes that we put in, but in the past, when we talked about the parking on the side, it may look like in the drawing that it's married to be pulled in, but as we discussed in the past, this could still be parallel parking, it's just the way we're going to set it up, is that correct?
That's correct.
So we could still have boat parking and trailer parking on those sides?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's, that's effectively what we have today, is both parallel parking, using the parallel of them to Block Q area.
But we won't be cutting the...
How you decide to position that is totally up to the supporters.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, sir. Are you going to be here in case we have more questions on this Block Q discussion? Are you trying to get...
I gotta get in the car in the next two hours, so.
Go cook a turkey.
So happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
If there are questions that come up, feel free to contact me.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Chief Dixon?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chief.
So it's November, we're excited. Every time I look, the crowd's getting thinner and thinner, so everything's going good on our end. We've actually finished all of our in-service training. We've gotten all of our officers through their 2023 in-service. We're, we're done for the year, so we're, we're glad for that. Actually, Frank and I are heading next week to Salemburg to start our 2024 in-service. So when we get back from that, we'll go ahead and start implementing 2024 for next year, so we're staying ahead of it. This is, this is the time of the year where we actually get to slow down and catch up on things like that, and so that's what we're focused on. Other than that, I'll give a public service announcement to everybody else, is we have seen a couple of scams, or had phone calls from people. Scams are starting to go around again, so we've talked about it before. If you get a phone call from somebody who says they're the police department, or the jail, or anything like that, and your grandson or your granddaughter's in jail and they need money, please do not send them money. Come talk to us about it, we'll walk you through the process, but do not send them money. Once you send it, it's gone, and you'll never get it back, we'll never get it back. I hate it. But if you send them money, we'll never see it again. But we are starting to see some of those phone calls again, so if you get a phone call, don't listen to it, hang up on them, jot the number down, come let us know, and we'll take it from there, so. Other than that, that's what I've got, and I hope everybody has a happy Thanksgiving, and if you have questions, comments, or concerns, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
Commissioners, you got questions? We appreciate you and your department, sir.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Mr. Evans, inspections.
Good afternoon. Let me go ahead and say happy Thanksgiving to everybody, before we start. Especially the Department's busy, it's very busy. Right now, we have thirty-three brand-new homes out there that are being built. We have two-hundred-and-twenty-seven other permits that are active. Of those two-hundred-and-twenty-seven, there's thirty, there's twenty-nine of them that are over thirty thousand. That means they can run between thirty and a hundred thousand for improvements. And then we have three that are over a hundred thousand, and most of those are substantial improvements. If you take a ride down Ocean Boulevard, you'll see one over at the right, or two that are going through that. They're basically rebuilding the house, so they have to bring it in full compliance. So those are a little difficult, especially when we start doing the appropriate approvals for them. Permits issued, waiting for pickup, there's eighteen of them over there, and there's more homes in there. Total permits that are actually active are two-seventy-eight. Permits that are in review as of the day, or as of when this was generated, this was four days ago, was eight. Counter issued is six, and zoning issued is fourteen. So you can bet that those, those twenty-eight will be, be going out of the office pretty soon, that's actually permits issued. Permit service for inspections are eighty-four, that's what we had to put our hands on for the inspections, et cetera, and we constantly work those files. Total inspections made is three-eight-one, and that's a, that's a significant number, because that's roughly twenty-one a day, which is, if anybody that's in the construction business knows that sometimes we go out there and it takes us a long time on some inspections, depending on the quality of the contractor and, and the work that's been done, and the investigations we have to do. So two-point-five hours is, is a good number, but it's, it's, it's going to be hard to maintain, because you never know what's going on. But other than that, we're very busy, we've got all those projects going, we've got tons of projects going, we've got tons of plans in the office, the things that are going on that the town is working on. We constantly have to monitor and work those, just like the Block Q. We're constantly studying them, looking at them, that kind of stuff. So the special department's very busy, very, very busy.
Any questions from the Commissioners? Thank you, and your department, sir. Mr. Hewitt? Number seven.
We're on Block Q.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. The consideration of selecting the contractor for Block Q as the item, the town received two bids at the second scheduled bid opening for the Block Q work. One from JP Russenson and the other from Wells Brother Construction Company, with the most responsive bid appearing to be Wells Brother Construction Company at three-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-eight-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars ninety-one cents, which has been certified by the architect. If the Commissioners want to move forward with awarding the contract to Wells Brothers Construction Company, there's, also needs to be a budget amendment, which is included as attachment to. The letter of intent in order to close Carolina Avenue at attachments three and four will also need to be adopted. If the Board elects to move forward with the selection of Wells Brothers Construction Company, their suggested motion would be to approve ordinances twenty-three dash fourteen and twenty-three dash fifteen, and to instruct the manager to complete the associated contract documents.
All right, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve ordinances twenty-three fourteen, twenty-three fifteen, and to instruct the town manager to complete the associated document.
Discussion.
I'd like to say something, so I hope I can clear up some of this propaganda about Block Q. At the second meeting that I took this chair up here, I started working on the purchase of Block Q with, with Pat and Mike and Woody Tyler and Gerald Brown. And we've been on this now for four years, I can say, within a couple of months. It's not something new, it's not something we just threw out there, it's not something that we took lightly, and it's not something we haven't thought about. To try to clear up some misinformation, I don't care if you put gravel down or pavement down, that stormwater plan's going to be there, it's going to be the same, because it's a state mandated stormwater. You guys don't know that, but you'll figure it out. We don't really lose boat trailer parking as you're insinuating, other than where the bathrooms are going to go. Now, we can't help that, because there's a building going to be where they used to park. But all those perpendicular spaces around Block Q can still be boat trailer parking. They don't have to be pull-in perpendicular parking like that plan is drawn, you can still park around. It'll be who gets there first, I assume. And then you left out South Shore, because there's parking there also, there's parallel parking on South Shore, and nothing's to say that you couldn't open up something else when you all decided to do that, some, some other location. Now, we did take into consideration the pavilion, we've all read that report. We knew it was coming, so we decided to leave some green space there. So a new pavilion, if so desired, will fit in that green space without much effort at all. And then you'll have your parking, the boaters will have their designated parking, parking will not be illegal and chaotic anymore, whereas it is now, because some photos that I've been sent, they're just parked everywhere, and it could, it must have been from years ago, because it wasn't legal parking, and maybe I don't even catch it or whatever, but what I've been sent is, is just boat and trailers parked everywhere, wherever they wanted to park. So maybe we lose a few, but we don't, we weren't tasked with the objective of parking every boat and trailer that comes to this island, we can't do it, nor can we park every car, or tourists, or anybody else that comes to this island, because we have limited space. But we chose, instead of making double the boat trailer parking spaces on that property, to leave that green space for the placement, hopefully, of a brand-new facility that everybody can enjoy. So hopefully, that clears some of this stuff up. So I'm making the motion, I hope it goes through, and, you know, it's, it's not something we just fabricated. Took a lot of hard work, a lot of effort on the staff, a lot of effort on the engineer and the architects that designed it, and it's been thought through. And I don't care who drew it, you could draw one, you could draw one, you could draw one, you could draw one. And yours might be better than his, but that doesn't negate the fact that we have to start somewhere. But we can't move forward if we don't move. So that's why I'm pushing this through.
Anyone else?
Well, my only comment is, this is not, by any means, trying to rush something through unthought, that we haven't thought all the way through. You've got to remember why you live here. You live here because this is a great place. It's a great place because we have tourists coming in to help us, property owners, pay our taxes. If it was just the property owners and we didn't have, you know, occupancy tax and parking and all the other stuff we had, we couldn't hardly afford to live here. It's not a private island. So with the, the boat parking is a must to keep our tourists coming back, the old parking around the thing is great, but us boaters that try to back a trailer up that you can't see in a parallel parking place, that's kind of hard to do. It's not convenient, it's not a good idea, so having the proper parking for those boats is great, and having parking that will still be available, which I'm glad the page clarified that with DM Varner, but we, we knew that you could continue to park the boats around the perimeter. There's been a lot of, biggest bad information on this project. There's not going to be fifty percent paid. Now, there's fifty-three percent that were considered when we did the stormwater study. So I, I believe there's only going to be twenty-eight percent of it paid.
Yeah, if you look at the stormwater plan, it tells you, when you look at the forty-one point two-three-five percent, there's a double asterisk there that tells you that build-upon area also for impervious area includes the gravel areas, and it also includes, although it doesn't include the acreage or the land, it includes the right-of-way area around the outside, because it's, it's affected by the stormwater, so it has to be part of the stormwater plan. So there's, there shouldn't be but about thirty percent inside for Phase One that's going to end up being paid for, for the use, and then, of course, the exterior. And that's, I think that's the big thing. If you remember correctly, inherited acres, the state stormwater permit wouldn't allow anybody to have anything, because they considered gravel as impervious, and so we, we actually put in a request to have that removed in that area. But for their state water permits, all those areas that are affected, depending on the materials, doesn't have to be asphalt, are considered impervious. What our ordinance would consider pervious, they consider impervious.
Thank you, Tim, for clearing that up. Again, when surveys are done, and it's, it's a limited number of people, and only half of that limited number of people don't like the idea, now where, where in the world are you getting a, a survey, you know, that you'd really think that that survey would represent the twenty-two-hundred property owners here at Holden Beach? That's absurd. So I, you know, again, I, I think this is a project that we need to move forward on, and the, the part that, that, you know, really surprised me was, when we were trying to purchase this property, you know, we were told by, an association, let's just do that, that it was, it was not a good idea. And now, it was say, they said that the, the purchase of Block Q property has been called now a valuable town asset. So I guess, you know, I guess sometimes you, you see that we're really trying hard to make stuff work, and when you go from, oh, this is a terrible idea, to a valuable town asset, I think we've done a good job. Thank you, sir.
I'm going to add to what they've said. I don't know why this was stated as an emergency situation, it's something that has been very well thought out. I want to add, just like with the pier purchase, we pointed out that we didn't purchase the pier, there was other reasons we, we purchased that property. So with Block Q, there was multiple reasons we bought that property. Boat parking, and these, these big boats that can't parallel park, we're trying to accommodate the smaller boats and the bigger boats. You have pull-through parking, you're also going to have parallel parking, we're going to have some green space. It's been discussed about the pavilion, but we can't just stick the pavilion over there, there's got to be, you know, done properly, the public hearings, things like that, but the thing that's, the elephant in the room is the handicap bathrooms. That hasn't, that wasn't in the mediation agreement, because before that mediation agreement was made, this plan was already set into place. So that wasn't in that agreement, because we already... So, that wasn't in that agreement, because we already said we were gonna put these bathrooms here. So, just to get rid of those bathrooms and say that the bathrooms that we currently have under the bridge are acceptable is not acceptable. For us to sit there and expect handicap people, or people with walkers, people with crutches, to use the bathrooms that are under the bridge now is not acceptable. These people that need to use these bathrooms, we wanna have showers there. That's what that is. We already have attained a grant for that. Our staff has worked their butts off to get grants. When we bought these properties, we said we would get grants. We're getting those grants. If we start turning those grants down and saying we don't want them, we're not gonna get grants anymore. So, we've gotten grants for that. To sit there and say that those bathrooms are not needed is ridiculous to me. And we're trying to make green space and accommodate the boat parking. So, there's a multipurpose there, and I don't know where it came. It was emergency. This is something that has been discussed over and over and well thought through, so.
Judge, you got anything? Mr. Hewitt, you got anything else? You ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, say no. Madam Clerk, it's unanimous. Number 12, Ms. Ferguson.
Good evening, everyone. Each year in April timeframe, we have the canal surveyed. The results came back. Harbor Acres Working Group was not happy with the shoaling situation that's happening at the entrance canal and some hotspot areas within the finger canals. We are applying for a grant through the North Carolina Division of Water Resources to assist with navigation maintenance dredging of Harbor Acres. To complete that grant process, with all of their grants, they require a resolution from the board. That resolution is in your agenda packet tonight. Currently, the engineer's cost estimate is $343,800. And that grant, since the time we did this with the complete dredging of all canals in 2019, has gone to 75% state-funded and 25% local match. So, we will be asking the state for $257,850 based on the engineer's estimate. When we do apply for this grant, that's locked in. So, if it doesn't come in high, if it comes in lower than that amount for some reason when it goes out to bid, they'll only give us 75%. But if it comes in higher, we are locked in at this amount. I know that, based on talking to the working group, that I think any help that they can get would be appreciated. And so, if you want to move forward, you'd need to adopt the attached resolution, which is 2312.
Okay, sir. Motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve a resolution 23-12, the Waste Resource Development Grant, to move forward.
Looking for a second. All right, discussion.
Kristi, can I, I just wanna provide a benefit, I guess, or to clarify. The department, this grant that we're gonna be awarded, is that gonna decrease the amount the homeowners in that area have to pay for the dredging?
From their assessments, so normally, if they don't get the grant, which is not guaranteed, then they would have to pay the entire cost that it comes back at, which is estimated to be $343,800 from their assessments. But their percentage now at 25% of that cost estimate will be $85,950. So, the state could be picking up 75% of the cost. So, yes, they would not have to pay nearly as much.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? You ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
Thank you.
Unanimous, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Okay, we're on number 13. We hand this over to Mr. Hewitt. And before I do that, Mr. Hewitt, the comment was made tonight about maybe not having a whole lot of confidence in the relationship with Mr. McIntyre. Mr. McIntyre has brought millions of dollars to this town. The relationship with this town goes back 20-plus years. And I would say to you that I think he's been a friend of the town for a long time, and the record will prove that. We should always look and be careful of all wording and all contracts. But as far as his ability to deliver and a friend to the town of Holden Beach, 20-plus years has been a good representation of a job well done, in my opinion. Mr. Hewitt.
Just that this proposed agreement updates the existing Wardage Smith Agreement, which is scheduled to truncate at the end of December. It updates the agreement by extending it out through the end of this fiscal year of June 30th, 2024, and then adds at the existing rate, and then adds in for an extra term of 12 months from July the 1st, '24 through June 30th, '25, at a rate that's $500 more a month, up to $9,725.
I found this on the web.
That was Siri talking to me. I got a message from space.
Yeah, hallucinating there for a minute. Okay, all right. Is there a motion of any kind? We can discuss if we can get a motion on the floor. All right. Judge made a motion. Brian, second. Discussion?
I just wanna say, it's undeniable what they've done for this town. We couldn't do it on our own. It would be impossible. And it's been a great relationship for the time that I've been here. And they have provided this year some massive help. So, I just, I hope they understand how appreciative we are of what they've done.
Any more discussion?
I agree with Brian with the millions of dollars that they've pointed in our direction. It's hard to deny them a small increase.
All right. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Unanimous, Madam Clerk. We're on number 15. Public comments about anything you wanna talk about. Oh, skip 14? Quarterly meetings, I'm sorry. Dr. Dyer, I apologize to you. You're very important. You have the floor, ma'am.
So, at the beginning of the year, back in January, we set up the budget meeting quarterly workshops and different work-related meetings. And it was proposed to make a quarterly meeting. So, there was a meeting on December 21st scheduled. And at this time, with that being that close to the holidays, it doesn't appear that we're gonna have any business that we need to direct them. So, I was just gonna make a motion to go ahead and cancel the December 21st meeting and leave January meeting to schedule any future special meetings.
Out of motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Second. All right, discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Now, we're on...
Mr. Mayor, can I, just to clarify, that was a quarterly workshop meeting? It's not the cancellation of the regular meeting on the 21st?
I'm sorry. I didn't clarify that very well. We still have the regular...
Okay, again, we're gonna try number 15. Public comments. And anything that you want to. Captain Williams, if you will come forward. You got to give us your name and information again. We have to have name and information for recordation purposes.
So, Brian Williams, again, 2647, before regulation. So, first off is, I know a lot of people, they always bring their complaints before appreciations. And so, I would like to say that as far as my appreciation, as far as the town steps forward in doing what they're doing, as far as parking, is greatly appreciated, far beyond that. As far as the details, as far as the parking, maybe you can put some insight in somebody that uses it the most on the direction, parallel, and that. Number one is this. It's not education of people to learn signs. It's signs. They got no problem driving the driver in the same direction. They got no problem going down the one-way roads. That sign that's on there is not the sign that's down there. The sign that's down there, it's got a direction. It airs this way and that way, and it's a parallel. So, it's extremely confusing on the signage, number one. Number two is this. It's easy to come along after and point at somebody and say, "You parked the wrong way." I don't know if you've ever witnessed these people backing trailers down, okay? But what happens is, the direction of travel of the first person that goes in that line there, maybe they read the sign wrong, or maybe they didn't get the lesson or endorsement on their license, but either way, it's still a problem. Now, the option for the other person is to do the correct thing by law. Then you got two people going the opposite way. Then, when the guy comes along and writes a ticket, well, everybody's parked by there. The law, by the way, doesn't care if you park forward, backwards, upside down, left or right. As long as you can put the vehicle in the spot, you're making it challenging for the people, as far as that goes. If I pull up there, and this man up here, he's going the wrong direction, and then those people are going the wrong direction with him, and I'm the only person going the right direction, should I step out and maybe teach them the right way to go? Or park my vehicle? That's the choices I have and get the tip. And so, I really think there needs to be some thought process as far as the direction of travel or signage or how it goes. I can tell you, there's some trouble along there. And come along afterwards and write a ticket for what you have to do, you pretty much fight for survival and get parked. So, I would take a look at that, as far as that goes, and bring that, you know, as far as finer details, as my advice before.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
If you didn't sign up, can I still speak?
You don't, you're fine. Name and address.
Irvin Woods, 289 Ocean Boulevard East. I'm not a resident here, but I've been very active for 21 years. I've worked with a lot of, with two different mayors and a lot of commissioners over the time, look forward to working with the new commissioner. The East End is doing very well. I came in last night, and I haven't been out to see whether there's a drop-off, but the dredging of the inlet with the hopper dredge took care of the navigation issues that the fishermen needed and put a lot of sand on our end of the beach. Sand is like an airbag or a crumple zone on a car. The more you have, the more room you got before it gets to the soft tissue. And the dunes, the dunes got no damage on our end, because we had a lot of sand out there. I appreciate what this group has done. Look forward to working with the next bunch. The East End is building out more than I'd like, but it's also generating very nice tax revenue, both property tax and occupancy tax. Occasionally, hear people complaining about the renters. But for the renters and the occupancy tax, the real estate tax could probably be two or three times what it is today. So, just put up with a little aggravation. If you didn't have renters here, there wouldn't be enough traffic to support a drugstore across the bridge, a grocery store across the bridge, and a lot of the services you have. So, take the good with the bad, take the tax revenue and the money flowing around the economy. Have a good Thanksgiving.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else want to speak about anything on your mind?
Tom Myers, 31 Ocean Boulevard West. I'm obviously disappointed that the board decided to move ahead with the contact with Block Q, and I'm sure hopefully figure out a way that we can move the building there away from the sewer system and accommodate the festival. I look forward to seeing plans that have that on the drawing. As an incoming new commissioner, I did learn some valuable experiences from this about transparency, about open governance, and about informing the public. I've come to the realization that holding town meetings and expecting the public to follow along and understand what's going on is not the same as conducting information sessions, communicate directly with the public, and encourage interaction. Ocean Mall Beach refers to these as listening sessions. I went and attended one just to see what goes on. Kinda like open-mic night, where people just come up and say their concerns. No voting goes on. There is back-and-forth dialogue, so that you can reach a common understanding of the issues and get the information to answer your questions. So, at the next VOC meeting, the new board will be setting our meeting schedule. I hope it will include a number of these information, listening sessions, open forum-type events. And I would like to ask the public to weigh in in terms of, you know, what are good days, what are good times for having these. I hope we have a sufficient number of them. And thank you for your service.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak about any topic on your mind? All right. Thank you so much for being here. And Mr. Town Manager, number 16, your report, sir.
Yes, sir. I'll be brief. Concerning the Coastal Storm Damage Reduction Study, the Water Development and Related Appropriations Act recently authorized another $425,000 for the fiscal year 24 federal portion of the core study. And additionally, I know that we had mentioned it the other day, Mr. Mayor, but I think that if we can get that 1,400-page document and shake it again, that there might be something else involved out of it, because it looks like that there was another $750,000 in that state budget that was appropriated to cover the rest of the non-federal sponsor costs for that study. Block Q, $420,000 grant award has been made to Holden Beach for the Kama Public Beach Access Bathroom. Sewer lift station improvements. We've been in contact with our EPA Regional Project Representative last week. Our grant package commitment notice has been finalized. And hopefully, it'll come out of the EPA headquarters sometime within the next month, before Christmas, is what the project officer is shooting for. Additionally, we have received guidance and have made our initial application for the state's Division of Water Resources $2 million appropriation. So, as soon as we get those things tidied up into a bundle and figure out what the whole of them will be, then we can reengage on the bidding process. Concerning Ocean Boulevard resurfacing and the bike lane project, in case you haven't seen them yet, I understand that the contractor is on scene, underway, in various and unknown locations, until they show up with flashing lights and 33 cars to, or trucks, to carry out with some stormwater fixes. Other than the general, we're, once we finish with stormwater solutions, then we're gonna start really tearing the road up. But we're gonna have everything put back together by Memorial Day. That's pretty much the type of schedule that we're dealing with. Tim, have you got any, anything more accurate than that description? And finally, Thanksgiving morning, the turkey trot. We're expecting, as of earlier today, it was 300 people, based on pre-registration. But Ms. Ferguson advises me that her email has been blowing up once that people find out that the fee to participate in the 2.4-mile run-walk is a canned food donation. So, look, what time does that start, Kristi?
8:00 AM.
8:00 AM, Thanksgiving morning. Should be a good time. We've had really good response and participation over the years, and that thing has grown from about two... from about two dozen people to, I bet it'll be 400 people here. You didn't know that, did you?
He did know.
And, yeah. So if you're wondering what all the cars are up here Thanksgiving morning, that's what it is. And lastly, November 30th is the annual tree lighting ceremony that begins at 5:00. The entertainment begins at 5:00 with the tree lighting promptly at 6:00, and that's all I have.
Any questions?
So David, the lift station grant fund and stuff look favorable now?
Yes.
Well, that's, I guess that's one of the reasons...
There are more knowns. There are more knowns.
Right. Well, it's not something we put on the back burner, I know that.
Right.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hewitt. The mayor's comments are brief. I hope everybody has a happy, tummy-filling Thanksgiving, and I understand the weatherman's going to be good to us about Saturday, maybe. So everybody should have a good time. Also tonight, it was a pleasure to hear a good report on our financial status. It's also a good time of reflection in regards to, not only is the town in good financial condition, but we have money thanks to the staff and all those that participated in their own capacity. There's money in the pipeline. Again, our public officials above and beyond Holden Beach have been mighty cooperative in working with this board and the staff in helping us get the money coming this way. And of course, it's never good until the check clears. So if, I have no reason to believe that this money that we're talking about in the pipeline is not going to help and be delivered and carry us further down the road of financial stability. And it takes a lot of work and cooperation from everybody. And looking back, we went through sometime that we didn't have any representation in Washington, D.C., in helping us get these funds. And if you look back in history, the money flow coming this way from Washington, it will reflect that. So we're, we've got the wheels turning in the right direction, in my opinion, and hope that we'll see that money continue to come in the upcoming years. And if everybody works hard and works together, that will be the case. Overall, I think that the town is in good condition. There are those that don't think it is, and that's what America's all about, for everybody to have their opinion. And time will tell how things go, and we just hope that everybody works together and continues to make this the best family beach in America. And we can do that, and I hope that we will. And with that, Mr. Smith, your comments, sir.
Yes, sir. Well, again, this weekend coming up, we've got a lot to be thankful for. We've got to be, we should be thankful for this beautiful island that we get to live on. We need to be thankful for our staff that works as hard as they do to make sure that everything runs right. We need to be thankful for our police department. Those guys make it to where this is, is a place where we don't have to worry about somebody coming up and hitting you in the head. It's just, it's just a wonderful, wonderful place to be. It's also us to be thankful for our commissioners up here. Judge Arnold, you're a true gentleman, a professional, and it has been a pleasure working with you, sir. Mr. Murdoch, I want to tell you, I think Sylvia was right. You've got a rough exterior, but you've got a great big heart, and it's been, it's been a pleasure working with you, too. I'm glad, Doc, you're going to still be with us in the mayor. But I hope we all are thankful for the ability to have a wonderful Thanksgiving with our family and friends, and I just hope you all enjoy this weekend and stay safe.
Mr. Murdoch?
I want to thank everybody for coming out, for coming out tonight, and wish each and every one of you a happy and safe Thanksgiving holiday. Spend some good time with your family and eat some good food. That's what it's all about. I hope you guys that are incoming, that's going to sit in this chair up here that's currently mine, will work together. We'll have some transparency. We'll not continue with the barrage of threats and accusations that are untrue, that are unfounded. Three years ago, you attacked me on the pier. I told you how we would pay for it, what we would do, and we managed to pull it off. And it's not, like everybody said, just a pier. It's pier, parking lot, property preserved for decades to come, hopefully. Block Q, same way. You say we didn't put any thought in it, but that's, that's not true. You guys are definitely working on an, with an agenda. You guys are working as a team. And I'm asking you, Tom Myers, directly, and I hate to put you on the spot, but how are you going to serve on the POA and sit up here and represent the town as a commissioner? I hope you remove yourself from one of the two platforms. We fought you for years, and we've, even with your negative information, your negative energy, we've managed to move forward with these projects. I want to see them come to fruition. Don't push them backwards. Whether you like it or not, keep pushing them forward. Work as a team, as you say. I appreciate every vote that I got, and for those who didn't vote for me, you better buckle up. That's the not-so-nice Brian, right? But in all honesty, I have enjoyed serving this town. I live here. I've had a great life here, made a good living here, and in all honesty, you know, this is not an easy task, as you'll all soon find out, and I'll be sitting out there, so, you know? Good luck. I do wish that you guys would admit the success and the progress that this board has made. I wish you would acknowledge that in some way, in some cheap line item in your email or something. You said a million times we couldn't pay for the pier, we wouldn't have enough money, and that's totally not the case, $1.1 million. It's, it's, there's no reason for the attacks. I got a letter yesterday, well, she actually read it in public, attacking us sitting commissioner. We didn't do that when we took office. We didn't attack you guys. We didn't sit out there and, we didn't send emails like this. It's inappropriate, totally inappropriate. And you should be apologizing for that. But anyway, I could rant on and on and on, but the truth of the matter is, I hope you guys work together for the good of this town and keep pushing these projects forward for the people that need them, for the people that enjoy them, whether you do or you don't. There's a lot of other people you've got to consider. This is not a platform for a personal agenda.
And Dr. Dyer?
That's a solid grade.
Dr. Dyer?
Daniel, congratulations on that audit. You guys did a good job, hard work. I want to thank you, all your staff. Kristy, David, the grants that we're getting, I don't think people realize the importance. I guess one example was the money that's going to be saved to the, I live on a canal, and I know that that payment we make every year towards dredging, to get a grant to be able to help the homeowners not pay as much is greatly appreciated. Some of the grants come with stipulations. I know when I asked my mom and dad for money, there was a stipulation all the time. I either had to do something, do a chore or something. So some of these grants do have, you're not going to expect the state to give you free money, so sometimes there are stipulations to the grants. But when I came on two years ago, when we talked about buying these, doing these projects and buying this land, we did say that we would work hard to get whatever grants we could, and I think our staff has gone above and beyond that. And the amount of money that we've gotten is surprising, but much appreciated. I want to say something about these projects. One of the things that has been stated is why is Block Q more important than the other projects? One thing I learned in the last two years is some of these projects run not as fast as you want them to run. That's the way the government works. I know when we started talking about parking, we were meeting in here every night for four hours, a meeting, talking about the parking and how off it was going to be, and now, you know, everybody in the east end is thanking us, and parking's organized, and it's, the other islands are following suit. But there's three projects in the work that were quite important to us, Block Q, the pier, and the sewer station. Just because they are all fallen, you know, we had bids for the pier that didn't go, we didn't get any bids, and now we got bid opening again. So we can't put one project in front of the other. It's a timely manner. You have to do it in stepwise situation. So just because Block Q is up now doesn't mean that we don't think the sewer station or the pier are not important. It's just the way that the ball falls. So we want to keep these projects moving forward. We've worked hard for them. I don't think we've been, I mean, we've had public hearings, we talk about it in the meetings. If you remember, Block Q started out at 288 paved parking spaces, and several commissioners up here said no. So, I mean, that's how, you start with a plan, and then you make changes, and I think we've come up with a very good plan. I want to thank the judge for his service. You came on and helped us out when we needed it, and we appreciate your service. Brian, I've learned a lot sitting up here with you for two years. I know you're passionate, just like the rest of us. We're passionate about the town, and you can't make everybody happy all the time, but we try to make the most happy that we can. And so thank you both for your service. And hopefully the incoming commissioners, we can all work together and continue to push these projects forward, and I hope everybody has a happy and safe Thanksgiving.
Judge?
Well, I can't wait to hear what I've got to say. Thank you. Oh, I'm the newbie here, and I've had over 50 years in business and law and government and politics, easily the oldest rat in this barn. And I must say, I can remember, and I was very much involved with the group when we thought that the stars had aligned and we got that bridge here. I've seen this beach since I was a boy. I remember 1945, and all of the soldier boys had come home here. It's a great town. It's my hometown, and I'm very proud of it. Very humbled that I got to serve for the short time with you. I commend all of you, and I commend you who have been elected. The election is over. The people have spoken. I sincerely wish personal success and achievement and success for this town, which we, which we all love. There's an old unwritten rule that prevailed in this country for years and years. I hope we're not losing it, but all the evidence shows that we are. And it simply was this, that the winners and the losers after an election came together and said, "Okay, it's over. Together, we can make things a little bit better." It's not on this group or that group. It's together. I don't know what came to my mind. Well, I didn't, I didn't see that, all that roughness that they were talking about, sitting with you here. But I do remember my wife Sue, God rest her soul, we were married 55 years, but during the time I was chief judge, and I was on a tirade some, one night about something, and I made the announcement that, you know, I was the chief judge of this state, and I shouldn't have to put up with it. She said to me, she said, "You know what the difference between a four-year-old and the chief judge is?" I knew I was about to get it, but walked right into it. I said, "No, height." I'll say to you folks, and I'll say to all of us, everybody can tell you how to run the courthouse and the town hall, except the poor people sitting up here doing it. But I wish you all Godspeed. I pray for you. Thank you.
Are we in order for a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting, Mr. Seeger.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks for being here. We are adjourned.